Good evening, welcome to the March 6, 2018 Planning Board Meeting. One of the most important meetings that we have, I think, because tonight we have the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments that we're putting forth at the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. So that is actually the first item on the agenda this evening, and thank you for everybody who's here in attendance for this. Kathy, the first five bullet items that you have on the agenda deal with the medical marijuana bylaws. Can you just review those?
Sure.
Just really quickly? We don't need a full in depth.
Sure. So actually, so tho- those are, how they're bulleted on the agenda and in the public hearing is for every section that's-
Right.
-affected in the zoning bylaw. But the articles are such that there are two articles relating to marijuana. One that is prohibiting recreational marijuana, and then the second article that will follow that is the article for allowing marijuana. And also, what you have in front of you today, just today with town council, I received additional language that town council is recommending to add to the article to prohibit the mari- you know, recreational marijuana. And then there's also included in this memo to you, there's also the language, it's the same language that would be added to the general bylaw. In the public hearing, just so everybody knows that, as I know this is now going out live, the public hearing for the general bylaw is with the Board of Selectmen, and that'll be next Monday, March 12th. So as far as the two articles tonight, the only change to the article that is proposing to prohibit marijuana establishments is the language that you see in red. So the warrant has not been printed yet, this language can be added to the article, so it will appear, you know, if you all agree that that language should be added. And this staff certainly recommending that that language be added. So that will be, so that will, you know, in its entirety is how it'll appear on the warrant.
So can I just ask a question? This, the text in red just addresses a situation where someone may bring their own personal marijuana onto-
Yes.
...a site, a commercial site-
Yes.
-for consumption there.
Exactly.
And it prohibits that.
Right.
Also, I see it also extends to private social clubs-
Yes.
-and any other establishment that allows social consumption.
Yes.
Okay, so it's pretty much all encompassing of every place.
Exactly.
Okay.
And we, just as a side note, in talking to town council today, there may be, in the next couple of days, there may be some additional changes that the Cannabis Control Commission is adding to their regulations or amending their regulations. So we may see further suggestions from town council, and that's, you know, that's still okay, that's still within the realm of the public hearing, because you'll keep the public hearing open tonight, and you'll continue it to, at a minimum, to March 20th.
Okay.
And then, you know, in the meantime, I'll let you know if there's any changes. So aside from what you see in red, which is, you know, one comprehensive sentence, you know, the bylaw hasn't changed, you know, from our previous discussions. And then the article to allow marijuana establishments, there, since the last time we discussed, and I know, you know, tonight's the public hearing, but there hasn't been any changes, you know, to the wording on the bylaw proposal to allow the establishments.
Okay. Is there any comments by the board at this time?
No.
No, on this side?
No.
I'd like to open it up to members of the public, if anyone has any questions or comments about the proposed bylaws before you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, did somebody back there raise their hand on that? Okay, that's okay.
Just quickly.
Sure.
Carrie Martin, 1600 Lock Drive. Just a comment that, I know I've been coming to this a little bit, and I know a lot of thought went into this, and a lot of conversation, and insight, and research, and I think what's come of this, the opt-out bylaw, is a nice reflection of what the people in town had expressed, and some of the things that we've learned along the way, and I appreciate all the time you've gone into this, I think it came off as being a nice thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, and your address, 1600 Lock Drive. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. The next six bullet points address the two family dwellings in town. So Kathy, you want to give just a brief summary of what's happening there?
The, there's a couple weeks that I don't think appear in the language that you have tonight. They, you know, despite reading these every day, there's always something that you pick up, or someone else picks up that reads this. So the, again, several bullet points, but all condensed into one article. So under Part 1 in the article, for everyone, anyone that's following along, underneath that first little, you know, two-row table, it says the new footnote eight, but that's supposed to be three, so that's been corrected. And then, under Part 2, it refers to subsection B, and then we go right into small E, and there should be a one in front of the E. And so that has been changed, and that will be reflected in the warrant. And I'll, I'll get you a revised copy that just has that one in front of the E. And then, somebody did ask me, on the, on the second page of this article, or at least in the handout, the, just to verify that it was Section J, and it was a number five that we were adding, and I, just so that you all know, I did double-check that, and the number five is in the appropriate location.
Where is that?
On the, on the second page of the duplex article, the two-family article-
Right.
-someone had just asked me a question about whether that, you know, the J and the five were correct.
Okay.
And it is. I double-checked, and J is the appropriate section, and five is, will be a completely new five that's being added.
Okay. All right.
So tho- those are the two edits that I have, that, again, are not, you know, significant in any way that changes, you know, the intent of the bylaw. And then I also have, in front of you, and I know the proponent will speak to this, but you have just a single sheet that has a chart with the highlighted yellow, so that is being proposed by one of the gentlemen that's here tonight, and I know he'll speak to that, but I just wanted to make reference, you know, draw your attention to that.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or anything from the planning board at this point? No, on this side, any, George? No? Okay, so then I'll open it up to the members of the public who are here, if anybody would like to speak to the bylaw, proposed bylaw amendments regarding the duplexes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Jackson, I'm a lawyer that represents Tony Ibu, as we all know.
Yes.
And I live in Westboro at Hons and Busker. And Tony has made a book at this bylaw, and trying to address his concerns, which really from our point of view relate to the RC District. And we're fully aware of how much work you've done, how much input you have received from town members on this issue, and that it's important that something be done to ease the concern that some, a lot of individuals in town have. We kind of want to point out to you that, and you already know this, that the RC District is a significant district, it's a good-sized district. It has family residential areas, it has areas that are a lot of business zones and other zones, and we try to go through it entirely. So the characteristics of the zone vary, and it often is the case that we have, you come to points where zones meet, or where the type of area impacts the zone, and concerns come up. So we try to be very simple in what we're suggesting that you consider on the chart or the frontage, and a lot with requirements in town, and suggesting that although you retain 150 feet of both of those, that you give the opportunity to the planning board in a special, on a special permit basis, to consider reducing the frontage requirement based on the enabling conditions and what's most appropriate, based on surrounding properties and conditions. So this is not required, it's something that's within, within your jurisdiction to decide. So I'd like to, Tony would like to explain a bit what this frontage, and get this this way, and show us your recommendations.
Certainly.
Yeah. By instituting the rules, you're going to take everything in that zone and treat it the same, when in fact, everything isn't the same. And the only way, I think, to determine the difference between appropriate location, not appropriate location, is to have human input. A special permit would give you that. It would appear to me that this board doesn't trust the zoning board to oversee that, which is fine. Now it's, now it's going to be in your hands, and that should, that should make you feel even better. But there should be some wiggle room, so that these are allowed in places where it makes sense, and if doesn't make sense, enough people, enough people, sort of working hard at this, to figure these things out. It doesn't happen. So all we're asking for, to be a wiggle room, and even the 30,000 square feet, which is going to wipe out, in RC, it's going to wipe out all the, a lot of possibilities. So now, we're just talking about the frontage. And if you keep the frontage at 150, between aquifer, wetlands, photography, and what's left in town, I think as well, put the guy washing on the duplex. That's, and there's a need for it, they sell. People want, and then you have, you have locations, you say to yourself, this is a varied location for this, but you can't do it. What are you going to do there? What are you going to put? This is part of the plan. I don't think restricting planning that far makes a lot of sense. And I, from what I'm hearing from the board, you don't want to be in duplexes. I mean, that's, that's where this is going.
Well, I would say if that were the case, Mr. Ibu, this bylaw would read differently. So I disagree with that, and I also take issue with your statement that this board doesn't trust the ZBA to do their job. We've never felt that way, speaking for myself, I've never felt that way. I don't know any members of this board to have ever said as such, and I don't know that any of us have ever stated that anything that the ZBA has done has been incorrect or inconsistent with the bylaws. So I do take exception to that statement.
Well, I think we have a safeguard in place, and for some reason, some-
Well, for whatever reason, whatever prompted you to make that statement, I don't think it's very well received, be that as it may. The question that I have for you is, are you looking for this change in the RC zone only, or in all of the zones that are affected by this?
Yes.
So it's a limitation to RC.
Well, I might input that, that his concern right now relates to that zone, but if, to maintain consistency, and I saw that area and frontage requirements were increased, at least with the GR and maybe the remaining two zones, I'm not too good about that, but to maintain consistency, it felt that a similar adjustment could be made in one or more others. I don't think that, and I'm concerned, and I'm trying, and it may be more appropriate if you discuss it and think that it is.
Well, I can tell you that at the, I know that, Mr. Ibu, I believe you were at one of the previous meetings, not the last one, but the one before it. So at the meeting before that, we requested that Ms. Jubert review the lots in RC District and the other districts as well, and I believe that review was for lot size. And we, at the following meeting, reviewed all of the data that was provided by the town in that regard, and made a determination that there were plenty of lots that came out, well over 30,000 square feet. So have, but having said that, let me open it to the rest of the board to see if they have questions. Any questions on this side?
I couldn't, I was thinking everything you just said, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Saving my breath.
George?
Well, I think I'm the lone wolf who was opposed to increasing the frontage and minimum lot width, so this, I guess, is a way to say if it's an appropriate duplex, then it can be allowed on a lot that doesn't have 150 feet of frontage. So I guess I'd be in favor of this particular amendment.
Okay.
And I am concerned that if we don't at least do this as a minimum, the planning board is basically saying, we don't like duplexes, and we're trying to prohibit them. And I'm disappointed if that is the attitude of the planning board.
I don't think anybody on the planning board has said as such, so.
Man.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we've gone to great lengths to prove that we're, that's not the case, that we did our due diligence in terms of analyzing the remaining properties, because we were concerned about effectively prohibiting it. So I, I contend that that's not the case, but perception is perception. And then my concern about if we were to accept this is the subjectivity of, you know, this being detrimental to the neighborhood. We've encountered this before with other situations, where how do you kind of evaluate and quantitatively determine whether something is detrimental or not? So that's just my concern with that, is that it's a hard thing to prove or disprove.
Teresa, if I could just add a couple things. The, just to clarify for everybody, the review that we did in-house of the lots in the general residential in the RC was just for lot size. We don't have a method, and this is, this goes way beyond what I work with, with our GIS data, but with the, with the GIS director, there isn't a way that, we can't write a program that take, that can review frontage-
Right.
-because the frontage is never a straight line of just 100 feet or 150, you know, there's, it's always segmented. But the lot size, we can easily do, because every lot has, you know, a finite number of square feet. So, so the analysis that we did was, was just looking at square feet. And then the-
Can you explain the frontage comment? So you said it's segmented, why is that? Because it's-
Well, you, there's, there, I mean, there are certainly, a lot of subdivision lots have a straight line, or as straight as can be, that has the, either the 100 feet of frontage, or 150, whatever the zoning district is.
Irregularly shaped.
But there's, the majority of lots in town probably have a little bit of, you know, irregular shape to them, that to, to your, to, like, kind of just looking at them as a glance, at a glance, you may not see that, but then when you go into every single lot, and you, you look at how the frontage is made up, it could be on a corner, or it could, there could be a curve in the road, so, you know, the way the survey has to mark it, it might be, you know, 78.36 feet, and then there's another segment that's, you know, 20.2 feet. But-
Calculated comes up.
Exactly. So three, so three or four of them, you know, some of those segments add up to what the frontage is.
Okay.
And then, the, the second comment, the language that's, that's being proposed here is right out of the existing bylaw, as far as what your authority is for a special permit. And it is very subjective, and that's, that's the issue, well, it's not the issue that I have, but that's what a special permit is all about. It's, you know, it's, it's basically saying yes with conditions, and, and this is, you know, there's seven factors that you take into account, and two of them have to do with not being more detrimental to the neighborhood, and not, you know, being, you know, inappropriate to surrounding properties. So that's right out of the zoning bylaw. So just, just so that you have that background.
Okay. Michelle?
I have the same concerns that Leslie had, is how do you determine what's appropriate, and, you know, what is extreme detrimental to the neighborhood, and what it seems to be not as detrimental to the neighborhood. I do remember going back when we decided to change some of the commercial, and we started to pull the buildings forward with parking on the side and the back, and when we did our major rezoning, I know that some people liked it, many people didn't like it, but as a board, we had to do something, so I, I remember at that time, we decided, let's try it, right? And it works in some cases, and as you see in many buildings, sometimes it doesn't, and the building is, is back on the sides or in the back. So I felt like what we came to was like a lot of thought into the duplexes. I don't agree with you, George, I don't think we're trying to kill duplexes in the town, I think we're trying to find some sort of balance about the lot sizes, and with all the information Kathy gave us. And I think that's where we went for the min, for the frontage increase, because we also heard that other communities were doing, increasing the frontage increase and the setbacks. So I see it as a compromise. I don't know, I'd be interested to see what the other board members say. I do think it's going to get into a situation where we might have a set of duplexes going up, and no one shows up, there's no opposition, and it seems like the right thing to do, and then you might have another set of duplexes go up where everyone shows up, and then they're all opposed it, and then, you know, we have to find, you know, are you allowed then to deny it? And what you're basically saying is, no, you cannot deny it, you have to say yes, you know.
Well, again, if you go into the zoning bylaw, you have your seven, you know, this is right, you know, some of this language is right out of the state statute, but you have, there's seven guidelines for the special permit granting authority to, to review when granting a special permit. The first one, I won't read them all in, in, in its entirety, but basically, the first one is, the proposal is in substantial harmony with the master plan and other plans approved, you know, from time to time by the planning board. Second one is, the proposed site is in appropriate location for such use. I mean, they're very subjective. The third one, the use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. So two and three is what is, was what was written into this proposed amendment. Number four is, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. The fifth one is, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. In this particular case with the duplex, that primarily involves the site plan, you know, the location of the driveway, you know, does, does that make sense? Does that provide safe, safe, you know, access? Number six is, the proposed use will conform to any special requirements of the special permit granting authority. That's where you can put conditions into your decision. And the seventh one is, the proposal could not be reasonably altered to reduce the adverse impacts on the natural environment. So that's, you know, again, that would be a reason why you would grant a special permit, so. So those are the seven points that you have to consider when granting any special permit, whether it's the planning board or the zoning board of appeals.
Does that address your-
Yep.
-question about that? Okay. Amy?
Yeah, I agree, like, if we leave this waiver on, you might as well just leave the minimum lot area at, the frontage at 100 feet, because we won't be able to do anything but conditions on it. And a lot of the surrounding towns, it's up to 250 feet, so I thought 150 feet was a compromise. So I-
Well, we, we don't necessarily compare ourselves to other towns, because North River is not like anyplace else in the world. So we-
But I actually did go through, like, neighborhoods too, and I found a bunch of lots, I went down Davis Street and other streets, and, and I found there were plenty of lots with 150 feet of frontage.
Right.
So I don't think it would be a-
And I think that was, that was one of the things that you did as well, right? As you reviewed some of the areas in town for that as well, or at least in the RC District. So that has been examined. Anything else?
I'm not yet inclined to adopt an amendment such as this, because we haven't seen how the proposed bylaw works yet. So to go ahead and start making changes to something that we've put in an extraordinary amount of time into, I think it might be a little premature, which isn't to say that your concerns may be well-founded, and, you know, come the fall, or, you know, this time next year, we may be looking at an amendment for this, and certainly, if it turns out that there are plenty of houses or homeowners that want to do this on their property, but are effectively prohibited from doing that, and we learn about that, then we can certainly, in my opinion, I would say that we could reconsider that at that point. But, you know, we had public participation last, at the last meeting, and we had plenty of developers here at the meeting before that, as you know, and I, I think that between the work that planning department has done, and that the meetings the board has had on this, for myself, I'm not ready to make any additional changes to this until we see how it's working.
May I just, just a couple of comments on some of the discussion that's taking place. First of all, I just want to point out that it may be obvious to you that this proposal doesn't change the density of any of the construction goes on. In other words, there's, there's still a minimum of 30,000 square foot lots. What it does do is enable the board to be a little bit flexible on whether that is in frontage and width, or whether it's in depth. So, okay, I guess I'm setting up on that, you understand that. Secondly, my understanding, unless I misread this, was that the two-family dwellings is re, a special permit process is required for the two-family dwellings under the proposals. So this board's going to be addressing the special permit conditions that we've talked about, in any event, that those issues are going to be before you. And in effect, I think this just adds one other factor to, that you would be enabled to look at, which is frontage. And so it doesn't materially change what you're doing, you're still going through a special permit process either way, and so it, I think it enables you to have a little more flexibility in your decision.
It's, it's going to increase the human decision, which, which I think is, is important in this, because no matter what we do, even with what Kathy said, this research you did about the lots, doesn't help. You know, it's, it's too hard, it's immensely difficult to figure all this out, and not to have human decision in this, I think, is remiss. It's, it's a shame for you not to embrace that, I feel. And that's all I'm asking for, is that there be a human, it's just, just like, this is going to go to the DCR, DRC now, which is the best thing you could possibly have. I mean, I believe you're on the right track, I just think that living by rules and regulations that don't take the things into consideration that you need to, is, is coming up short.
Anything else on this side? Anything on this side? Does any other members of the audience have anything they'd like to say, or any questions or comments?
Could I briefly make a comment?
Absolutely, just give us your name and address.
My name is Tom Riordan, 7 Sunset Drive, and I agree with Tony's point that we need some flexibility to deal with some of the older, oddly configured, challenging lots, making it more onerous to do a duplex, and, and some of the transitional areas would be a great relief, especially those of us who deal with this on a- Especially those of us who deal with this on a daily basis as designers and builders. More and more restrictions after we have to deal with the groundwater zones, wetlands, odd geometry, topography, who knows what. And just adding another restriction in terms of frontage eliminates the possibility of developing duplexes in those areas where they are appropriate. And I think having the site plan review, special permit, as well as a design review is plenty to be able to control some of the unfortunate scale that we have experienced recently. So I, I would agree with Tony's proposition.
Mr. Ebu, as you sit here today, do you know how many lots have only a hundred versus a hundred and fifty feet of frontage?
No, there's so many more factors than just that.
I, I understand that, but what you're asking us to look at are the minimum lot frontage and width.
I don't think the town can tell us either.
No, that's, I, I agree.
I just know from building, at least half of about forty years, RC is primarily a hundred feet. It's been carved up by many people for that, for that purpose. And it seems to me that it's going to be rare that you come across a situation where it all works. Once you do this. Tom and I are both on, on, on the board that's going to review these.
The design review committee.
Neither one of us want to put these where they don't belong. And I honestly, I told Kathy this last week, that I, I don't believe it's been abused. I've, I, I've seen what's going on here and I, I, I think I'm a pretty good judge of what's appropriate and what isn't. And I haven't seen where it's been abused. And I, I think this is, this is all. And I know what you're trying to do and I'm, I'm with you. Believe it or not, this is what, this is what Tom and I do. We're trying to make it a better town. We're not, we're not going to take it to be any better town.
You're not the only builders.
Right.
Well, I just said that. I have a significant abuse.
Yeah, well, that's, and I respect you, have a lot of tremendous amount of respect for your opinion and quality of the work that you have done in town. You're among the best, so. Fair as long as it's from me and Tom's reputation as well.
I know the board didn't have a lot of discussion on the minimum lot width.
I don't think we had a lot of discussion on that. Well, we just, our discussion was limited to the, to the fact that you're starting at something in the front. It should carry to the back, so you don't end up with a triangle.
Right.
Is this something that we need to address this evening?
No, well, I, I would suggest, like we do every year, that you would keep this hearing open. And, you know, through, to, at a minimum to your next meeting, sometimes.
To discuss, cause I'm out of town, I'm the twentieth of that.
Okay. And then sometimes you, you know, you keep it open all the way to town meeting, which, which we may or may not have to do based on what's happening, what may or may not happen with the cannabis control commission. It's just a moving target at this point. They were very on track. And then, but you know, things have just come up in the public hearings and so they're reacting to those and, and changing their regulations. So, you know, I, I would certainly recommend that the hearings stay open. As I had said, after the last meeting, I went back to, you know, to David Kane, our GIS director, and asked him if there was any way to, okay, now that we know the, you know, the sizes that you're proposing and the frontage, you know, to do that, you know, another additional, you know, more in-depth review would take out slopes, take out wetlands, you know, you take out a certain percentage when you try to do a build out analysis. And again, it, it, it can't be done with the way our program is. One of the things that, that I can do, it, it's, it won't be scientific, but I can certainly, you know, try to go through the, at least the majority of the lots in the, in the residential seed district to let you know, you know, just looking at the GIS maps, I mean, there's no, you know, there's no interpretation on my part. But just to say, you know, in looking at this neighborhood or that neighborhood or, you know, there, there are lots in excess of, you know, twenty thousand or there are a lot of lots in excess of a hundred feet or there aren't, you know? I mean, I, I can just say off the top of my head, in, in like Pine Haven neighborhood and North Gate neighborhood, they don't, they're not twenty thousand square feet and they're, they're, they might be a hundred feet of frontage, but they don't even make the, the lot size. So you're not going to see, you know, a ranch come down and a duplex go up. Whether this bylaw passes or not, it, there's just not enough land area. So in those districts, you'd have, even today, you, you know, someone would have to buy two properties in order to put up one duplex. Cause it's just, it was just zoning was different then and, and. But then there are other areas in the RC districts where, you know, they might have larger lots and some of them might have more frontage. You know, so I could just look at existing lots. You know, how to reconfigure lots is, is the big wide open question. But I, I can try to, you know, get you a little more, you know, numbers to look at for, for your next meeting.
I think the.
I mean, that helps you at all.
Well, I think that the only relevant data would be relative to frontage based upon the proposed amendment.
Yep.
And I don't know how cumbersome that's actually going to be, given.
I, I don't know either, so I'll, I can commit to trying it.
I, I'm not adverse, if the board's not adverse to, to, to not acting on it tonight and keeping it open to get additional information, if it, if we can have additional information, I'm not adverse to that.
I mean, even if there wasn't this proposed amendment, I would still suggest that you, you need to keep this hearing open.
Right. But I mean, like without taking a position, a firm position one way or the other on the amendment, I, I don't have a problem withholding off on it if that's the board's pleasure until our next meeting. So that we can maybe get just a little bit more information from you. Is that all right with this side?
Yep.
Sorry with you, George?
Yep, just with RC though, not GR.
Can I say one more thing first?
Sure.
In the last three years, there have been eight of these buildings built in three years. This is, you know, we're trying to kill a flood of them. I don't know how, I don't know how I can, what else I can explain this.
I, I understand that position, obviously because, you know, as we're all residents and we, we see that. It has been a very small number and I don't think that, that, that the number of duplexes is what's prompted the outcry from a majority of the people I've spoken to.
I'm with you.
It's location, size and, and density and all those other factors. And that's the problem. So, you know, it's when, when you talk to somebody who lives on Ruth Road, the, the thought of them having a duplex like what we see on South Street go in next door to them is terrifying. And that's sort of, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to address. And we're not trying to be overbearing in the process. Cause understandably, there needs to be options for housing for others as well. But at the same time, it can't just go unchecked and unfettered.
Continuity is most important. And that's, that's exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
Non-continuity.
Right.
That this board is not going to allow that to happen. The board online is not going to allow that to happen. The safeguard is going to be in place for that.
Right.
The question is, when you have a site that is very appropriate for this, but due to these rules and regulations, it can only be considered what's the point of that? Because there, there's going to be recycling going on in the future. And all the buildings are getting bigger. Single-family homes are getting bigger and, and duplexes are getting bigger. The increased size of living space for a person since nineteen seventy-three has doubled. Ninety-something percent of buildings are getting bigger. Are we going to, now, you still have the continuity aspect to this. Are you going to take a big building and put it in a subdivision with houses it doesn't belong with? I don't believe that's going to happen. I don't even, I don't even think, I don't even think a builder, like, can't say this very clearly, but I don't think most buildings, I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it yet in this town. I haven't seen.
So I think one of the concerns is the four duplexes that went up in Pine Haven, because Pine Haven's filled with ranches. But that almost made sense because as Tom just indicated, it was the transitional part, right? It was coming out of Pine Haven and it was right behind Commercial and it was like a natural fit for that lot. I think the concern with the residents are, is it then going to go two or three or four lots down? All of a sudden, now you see the small ranches, you know? So, but, but, but there's nothing in the bylaw that doesn't say it can't happen. That's why I was fond of, you know, creating like an overlay type of thing. But we decided not as a board to do that. I would say if we come back again, maybe you could give us an example of a lot in town where it's a perfect fit, but it just has a hundred and twenty-five or it has a hundred and ten, right? Something like that where, you know, I always say a pitch is worth a thousand words. They're like, oh yeah, that would be a perfect fit. And it's coming up on. Yeah.
Right. And so I, I think that that's perhaps the problem that I'm having. It's because I understand exactly what you're saying with respect to continuity. But when I look at those neighborhoods with these small cookie cutter lots that were created in the fifties and sixties, the remaining lots in that neighborhood can't really tolerate that a duplex going in without breaking the continuity. So then what is that, then, that leads me to question what the concern really is. Because if we really are trying to keep continuity in place by allowing a smaller lot size, of frontage rather, we are providing an opportunity to break continuity.
If the purpose is not, is not to put them in places where they don't belong, it's to take into consideration of a lot that's perfect for it, that doesn't have the frontage.
So I think Michelle's idea may be a good one. If you can give us just a couple of examples where you think that might be the case, that perhaps could sway us to move in a different direction on that. And I, I don't want to foreclose the opportunity for you. I think it, I think if you can, we're going to make your lawyer earn his fee on this one. I, no, I understand.
I do think the South Street one on the corner of South and, what was it?
Oh, up at Summer.
Was probably the one that really brought a lot of visibility to it, you know? That was the one where we.
Yeah.
The density, that, that one parcel was so dense that everyone was like, wow, that feels really dense. And that's what started everything about a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Started talking about.
I think it's a great idea to review these, like, what was the new portion of this?
I mean, through site, through the design review.
Yeah.
Even the one behind Trinity Church, it was a five thousand square foot lot and they wanted to put four and we went down to two, but there's really not even enough room to park.
Right.
That's where you need the human, the human aspect of this. Has, has to hold right in those.
Right. Right. Well, we certainly do value your opinion on this. And, you know, if we could have you serve as the moral arbiter for all the other developers, I don't think we have a problem. But unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't know that, we, I don't know that Mr. Kader would put you on payroll for that. We'll have to rely on others to do the right thing. So if you're not, if you're, if you don't object to coming back at the next meeting and just providing us with a little bit of information, that would be very helpful, I think, for us. Okay, you're welcome. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this particular bylaw? Anything on this side? Everybody on the board's okay with that, that suggestion?
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Okay, great. Sure?
I just want to say something because I feel like only developers spoke tonight. So I just wanted to represent someone who's from the side of the homeowner and off-brow. From the side of someone who's had a class and decided to take that. Who cares about the old school looking field neighborhoods of the quaint little town? I think there are a lot of people that came last, the last meeting and spoke about not wanting that in their neighborhood. And everybody says, well, fine, it's not in mind, who cares? But apparently there's been a great flux in the whole town and they seem to pop up in clusters and, just to change the dynamic of the town, I appreciate the human element, but we're not the humans that are developers who are deciding on it. And it sounds like this community that decides the role of developers. Just to keep in mind that there are, there are a lot of people that are against the, the increase in the number of duplexes. I think thirteen have gone it since twenty-eleven, so, so not continue that trajectory. I think there's something that is always very strong with a lot of people.
Thank you.
Can you describe the makeup of the design review committee?
Sure.
To that?
Sure, yep, yeah. In the zoning bylaw, it's, in, you know, in, in the design review section, what the makeup of the design review committee is. And it was very purposely put together that there be a business owner, which in our particular case, Tony is that person right now. An architect, we have actually two architects on the board. A landscape architect or of, of that field. So there is a landscape architect on the board and then a member of the planning board, who also serves as the chairman, which is Michelle for the design review committee. And just like the planning board or the zoning board of appeals or the board of selectmen, any board, if, if a board member has a conflict, they have to step, they have to recuse themselves. So if there was ever, and I don't want to, you know, single out Tony, but if there was ever a conflict, if Tony had something before the design review committee, he would have to recuse himself. And, you know, again, like I said, just like on the planning board, zoning board of appeals, you know, that's something that's, that's required.
And then ultimately, there's the safeguard that this doesn't pass unless the citizens vote on it at town meeting. So ultimately, it's in everybody's hands, not just the developers or ours or design review, so. Okay, so then that leaves one.
Yep, there's just that one quick article that references a site plan and all it is is a, I believe it really was a typo a few years ago. And again, I'm in the zoning bylaw every day, but, you know, sometimes you pick up a typo, sometimes you don't. And unfortunately, with, because it's zoning and because it has to go to a public hearing and because it's, it's New England and it has to go to town meeting, that's why this has to be fixed at town meeting. So it doesn't change the intent of the bylaw at all.
Any comments from the side on the typo correction?
Nope.
Any on this side? Any members of the audience, any members of the public have anything to say about the typo correction? No? Okay, that's great. So that wraps the, tonight's discussion under the public hearing for zoning amendments, proposed zoning amendments. But we're going to keep the public hearing open until the next meeting.
We need to move the voters to do it.
Yeah, yes, you need to make a motion to, to continue it to, your next meeting right now is March twentieth. And again, I would anticipate that you probably even go into your April meeting too.
Yeah, we can't do March twentieth, right?
I'm out of town that whole week.
Oh, and actually, Michelle is too.
I'm out of town too.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe March twenty-seventh?
Kathy, what were you mentioning earlier that you thought there were changes to the cannabis control commission that might affect town meeting?
Oh, yes, if, just, Michelle, on the, I think it was just as you might have come in tonight. There's, there's a memo there I have for you that has some red highlighting. And that was, just today, we worked that out with town council.
Okay.
And this is, actually reflects the, it's been in the newspaper, whether, you know, people are reading the Telegram Gazette or not. But it's about a private social club that the city of Worcester permitted. And then after it was permitted, the, the private social club decided that they were going to allow people to bring in, you know, various forms of cannabis. So it was, it, people are looking at it as a, as a potential loophole. So it falls under the social consumption that the cannabis wasn't sold by the social club, but people were able, people are able to bring it in. So we just wanted to close out that loophole.
Okay.
So that's what that proposal's for. So as far as the next meeting, the twenty-seventh is, is zoning board of appeals. And so we're going to get tight here, but I, I'm, I'm already booked on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. Oh, and the twenty-sixth, that's the board of selectmen. So if we, if you, if you go to your April third meeting.
That's fun.
Do we have other items that we should?
Well, you have a, a special permit site plan application tonight that you'll be reviewing. And they, they are just finishing out some tweaking with the design review committee. So you wouldn't have been able to close that tonight. So, you know, this would push them into another two weeks.
We don't have a meeting next Thursday, right?
Thursday the fifteenth?
I'm sorry, next Tuesday.
Tuesday the thirteenth?
Yeah.
No. You, you could, you could, you could do it the thirteenth if, if you wanted.
I'm sure that.
And then go to the third?
I don't know if that'll give, like, you enough time to do what you want to do?
Oh, I do, yeah, we do have a meeting that night.
I, I have it on my calendar.
I do too.
No, originally, on the, originally, I think we looked at just doing the thirteenth. And, so, and then we went back to the sixth and the twentieth.
Because I only have the thirteenth and not the twentieth, but...
Yeah, me too.
Fred sent out something saying groundwater was shifted because the planning board shifted.
Yes, because Fred, I think Fred, yeah, I, I, I don't remember exactly what happened there, but I think he went with, when we were originally talking about meeting on the thirteenth.
So do we want to move, since, since most of us seem to have it on our calendars, do we want to continue it to next Tuesday?
You, groundwater is at seven though, isn't it? Not at, not at six, it's at seven that night. So you could, because George is on the groundwater.
Okay, then we're like, we're back at April three. April three work for everyone?
Yep.
All right, April three it is.
Um, okay. All right, so we're not meeting next, we're not meeting on thirteenth, correct?
Right. Only we can get together if you want, but...
Okay, so we'll continue to April third at seven o'clock.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the proposed zoning bylaws until April three, two thousand eighteen, at seven o'clock at night.
There's, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks, we'll see you then. All right. Next on the agenda, just a tiny little bit late, is the public hearing regarding the special permit and site plan approval for one seventy-two Barefoot Road.
So what you have, well, I was gonna say, you're not Peter.
Zachary Demus, Peter Demus is...
So while Zachary just puts that up, what you have in front of you is the, a memo from Fred that I believe he sent to...
Yes.
To use, okay, so I have extra copies if you need any. Hi, Steve. And, and then there's also the, which I think we have forwarded the email from the fire chief, but we've, we've discussed that. And I, and you have both of those in front of you.
Right. Okay.
Good evening, I'm Zachary Demus with Engineering Plan Services. This evening representing Mr. David McDonald of David McDonald Construction. We have a site development located at one seventy-two Barefoot Road, north side of Barefoot Road, just south of Interstate two ninety. The development consists of an access road coming off of Barefoot Road, servicing two four thousand square foot contractor facility units, warehouse units, with an extended access road going up to the top of the hill for a future installation of a communication tower. Site features onsite septic, on water, stormwater collection and filtration. And at the moment, we understand we still need to go through the design review as well as earthwork. So we can keep an eye on Mr. Field's comments. There's no exception to any of the items that we noted, nothing will be resolved this evening. Just an update, feel any questions that the board might have.
Do we, did we receive plans or anything?
Yes, you did, yep, I have, I have one set here. If you want to...
Kathy, do we talk, does design review, do they still have the space to do the cell tower?
The, the cell tower is not a part of this application.
Okay.
Uh, I, I'm sure the applicant can address that, but it's...
What I did was allocate space to make sure where I put my buildings.
Okay.
So all it is, is if they do come in and after you guys approve whatever, they have a squad.
Okay.
And I, and it doesn't work with the fire department backing up to the end of term. We just made sure everything, if they do want to come in, that it will work.
Okay.
There, and I think we talked about this, Steve, at one point, or maybe I, I talked about it with Peter. But the, you know, they'll, they'll be, if that cell tower is proposed, there'll be, you know, a few hurdles that have to be overcome. Because now that the buildings are going up, you know, the fall zone for the tower is one and a half times the tower height. So you're looking at a hundred and, if it's a hundred and twenty-five foot tower, it's like a hundred and sixty-eight. You're the engineer, so, something like that. And then also, you know, with the, right now, there's a residence next door. It's in the industrial district, but there's a residence next door. From what I understand, that, that residence may be coming down and something else proposed there, so.
That's the green huts, right?
Right. So, so again, the cell tower isn't before you, it's not, it's not part of this application, but they understand that they have to come back with an application to you if they want to move forward with that.
George, any questions?
Not at this point.
Yeah, I just had a question on, are these offices, or are they gonna be storing trucks in them? It says they're contractors.
Contractor base, yeah, so home electricians, you know, keep the vehicles, so we can have our own garage and our own house.
There is a contractual sheet, it's part of the design package.
Yep. Which sheet is it? I was just, I was just gonna say, if they were having trucks in, would they need a drain inside of?
Yeah, so those, yeah, those would be in the water separate area.
Inside the building?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, Ada.
And the site itself, you know, if anyone has been out there, is, it, it starts off low, you know, it's, it's practically right across from Iron, the Iron Mountain facility. And so it starts off low and it goes up in the back. And there aren't any wetlands on the site, and it is not in a groundwater district.
So there's not wetlands, right?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So one of the few sites in town that, that doesn't, that doesn't have either one of those overlay district, uh, you know, wetlands or an overlay district.
And did they talk, like, did Fred talk about the storage of hazardous materials, just in case it's...
It's not located in a groundwater district, so, right.
All right.
But he, but he did address that in his letter.
I mean, they, yeah, I mean, for insurance purposes, they have to be appropriately stored. But he has, Fred's got, it's about two and a half pages, where he talks about, let's see, some of the questions are about the gravel areas, you know, the parking areas, that those need to either be removed or, or paved. And, and, let's see. There's an earthwork permit that's, that's standard.
Is the issue about the site distance along the road, just proving that there's, yeah, some sites.
Yep.
Is there anyone living in the house next door now? You mentioned Kathy might be coming down, it's empty.
Uh, no, there's, there's, as far as I'm aware, there isn't anyone that's living there. Yeah, it's been vacant for a couple years.
I don't know, I think, but...
Oh, okay.
Because I guess just in front of us at the planning board, there's always like fumes, hours of operation. I just, if there was someone living next door, that might be a concern, but if there's no neighbors...
No, that, and the, the owner, I believe the, the person that was living in that house is deceased.
Yeah, it's a son or something.
But they were notified of this hearing. And from what I understand, just from the interest of, you know, we receive phone calls all the time, so, you know, there hasn't been anything proposed yet, but from what I understand, it's, you know, it's being marketed as an industrial property, not as a residential property.
Okay.
So, and then is, not to take away any comments Michelle might make, but it is before design review, because anything in the industrial develop, in the industrial district now comes to design review. And so they've been before the board, and the board offered comments about adding in some natural light to the, into the units.
I changed, so I went to the unit, we had all the lights done, all the windows added.
Yep, and so that, and that'll be coming back to the design review.
Planned on that.
Yeah. So that'll, so that'll be coming back to the design review on Monday, and then that'll be followed up, you know, with a memo to you saying that they've, you know, met everything from the design review.
You guys have completed your landscape design as well?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, we did fi, we had the fire hydrants.
Right.
We had the hammer, the hammer, the hammerhead turn were, but we probably won't, we're just gonna cut off at the end of the building, because that's something when they come in, you know, they'll get finished off there, so.
And you hadn't decided on the signage on each building, because you didn't know what your tenants were gonna be?
Yes, I thought that was something that we just followed standard.
Right, standard. Just a sign outside, maybe just the number of your building and stuff like that, yeah, so. And the lighting was good, they had already done a lighting plan.
Any other comments from the side? Okay. No comments there? Okay, thank you. All right, so you guys are looking to continue this hearing for a little while, so that you can finish up and incorporate all of these comments? And did you already indicate that the fire chief has provided?
Yes.
Comments as well?
Yes, and he, he actually was, was at one of the design review committee meetings.
Okay.
And, and I had originally talked to Peter Demus. So he was aware of the fire chief's comments, just about to turn around.
Okay, okay.
And the hydrant.
Is the April third date okay with you guys?
My father's open for the two week meeting.
Wait, what?
Doing one.
Right, but we had originally talked about March twentieth, but at, at the time, I didn't realize that two of the members...
Two board members will be gone.
Were gonna be gone. So given that this is a special permit, it, it affects your hearing. So you have to have at least four members present.
Right.
So.
So the first is the...
April third.
April third is the, is the next available.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you just need a time certain, so if you just said seven thirty, or, or even quarter after, I don't, you know, it's up to you.
Okay. Want to make a motion, anybody? Any motion?
Sure, I'll move that we extend, or continue this hearing until our next meeting on April three, two thousand eighteen, at seven fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor? Okay, so we'll see you guys on April third, and seven fifteen is your start time, and I'm gonna apologize now, because we might not do that. But we'll endeavor to, I really like to be on time, so, we'll try.
And you're at design review on Monday.
It's only eight fifteen, we're done with the agenda, so, it could be, who knows?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else on the agenda that we need to go through today? I don't have any of these minutes that are identified.
No, we, we don't.
Okay.
Elaine just caught up with zoning board, and, and she's in the process now of catching up with this. So by April third, you should have, you know, tonight and all of these.
Okay, perfect.
So the other, just the one item that I wanted to just point out is that everyone should, received an email this afternoon from me about the master plan. So because of the storm, we postponed the master plan meeting. And it's, already, I know Michelle has conflict with the, with the new date, which is March twenty-second. And the, the, between, between tonight, or actually tomorrow night, and the end of April, that March twenty-second was the one date, I, I actually have another meeting that night that I'm, I'm gonna have to split between the two, but it was the only night that the, because there's four consultants on the team, and they're all involved in the project, and they all need to be here, and want to be here for the, for the meetings. And that's part of their contract. So between the four of them and myself, that's where we first initially tried to find one open night. And, and that was the night, believe it or not. So they're obviously involved in a lot of other projects, whether it's, you know, private sector projects, they're doing other master plans, so they're out a lot at night also, as, as we all are. So unfortunately, you know, Michelle will have to, you know, miss the first one, unless I, you know, get a flood of emails from people that the twentieth doesn't work, the twenty-second doesn't work. But the, the twenty-second will be, you know, an introduction. They will, the, the, the consultants will have spent the day in town that day. They're, they're here from eight o'clock on. And first, we're doing a tour of the town, then we're, they're meeting with over sixteen people, which is a combination of department heads and some business folks and some residents. And so they're conducting, there's, all four of them are conducting interviews throughout the afternoon, and then they'll, you know, present all that information to the, you know, to the steering committee on the twenty-second. And then from there, we'll establish a set schedule. Right now, we're looking at meeting every other month, and then doing phone calls and newsletters and so forth in between, so.
So Kathy, how did they choose, like, the businesses and the residents?
They, they asked me for recommendations.
Oh, okay.
So I just, I made recommendations of, you know, just various people that, you know, are, are known to, to us as far as, you know, involved in the community. And then businesses that are, you know, I just kind of did a, you know, broad range.
Oh, okay.
They have...
Would you be able to share the list?
Oh, sure, yeah, I can, they, for local businesses, they're going to be interviewing Tommy Lowe, and then they're going to be interviewing Scott Weiss, who's with the Ceteris Company. So we have a, you know, a, I don't consider Tommy's store small anymore, but, you know, it's a small, sort of homegrown, local business. And then one of our largest, you know, landowners as far as development. The, for residents, they're going to be interviewing Diane Smith and Terry Gianato from the town common committee, and Liz Nolan, who's very involved in, in the community. I know I'm, and then there's various departments. They're also doing the housing authority and members of the North Row Affordable, Affordable Housing Corporation.
Do they, do they consider like any, because that's like a huge difference in businesses from someone who's a small store to a big firm like Ceteris. Was there anything in the middle that they considered talking to, like?
Well, they, they don't know anybody, so it's just what I suggested to them. So I just, you know, the, and there's only so many interview slots.
Right.
So that's, so I picked, again, someone that I thought that, you know, knew the town well, has lived here a long time, has been active in the town, and then is a business owner in town. And then I looked at, you know, someone where we have the most to grow in, which is the industrial development sector.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking someone in the service-related industry that you find, either the banking or insurance, or, you know, I mean, we have a ton of banks, but it's hard, it's, it's hard to choose just one bank when you've got so many in town.
Oh, and then I also, actually, Tony, Abu, is, asked me, well, actually, I asked Tony, but as to represent another, you know, business owner in town. And I think that might be about it.
Did you get a lot of response from residents who wanted to be on the committee, just out of curiosity? Like, did you only get like...
We had, we had probably, I have to go back and look to see how many people submitted. I want to say we probably had about six or seven, and, and we didn't interview everybody. And then, you know, and then we went, so we did go through, you know, the interview process with some of the people, and, and then they were chosen, you know, ultimately chosen, or appointed by the, you know, town administrator.
I thought more would have shown up or emailed. I thought you might have gotten like thirty or forty, but you only got six or seven.
You probably get a lot of participation at the meetings, but that long-term commitment, I think, is really hard for people.
I mean, we'll have the, you know, as I keep describing them, the, you know, the Saturday charrettes, and, you know, they may or may not be on a Saturday, but where, where it'll be a big public meeting, but it'll be a working... But it'll be a working meeting. So we, and we've done those in the past in this town, and you get a lot of people involved in those. And like Teresa was saying, people that, that, you know, want to, want to participate but don't want to be, you know, tied to a committee.
Right, and after the meeting that's on March twentieth, when's the next one?
Well, that's what they'll decide.
Okay.
They'll, you know, I, I want them to set up a, them meaning the steering committee, to set up a schedule with the master plan consultants to say, okay, this is, you know, we're going to pick the, you know, whatever. You know, the fourth Thursday of every month, or, you know, the, you know, we have to stay, for, for my schedule, I have to stay away from Mondays and Tuesdays. So that's what, that's one of the things I'm looking to do that night. So you and I can talk, you know, offline, Michelle, about, you know, what particular nights may or may not work for you.
And those other two committees who hadn't had, like, for historical, have you guys nominated someone yet?
No, Norm, it kind of slipped through the cracks, but Norm is going to come to the first meeting.
Okay.
But I now think that you probably have a meeting between now and the twenty-second. So you may end up appointing someone, they're, they're going to put it on the next.
I'm going to miss it, because.
Bruce said he's going to put it on the next agenda.
Same.
Did you get one from the recreation committee?
No, I, I don't have one yet, so those are the two.
Okay.
So that, that brings us to the fifteen.
Yep.
Yeah, we do have a meeting on the twenty-first, but I'm going to miss it.
We had a long time for this.
I know, I know, we've been talking about it since.
I know, so it's kind of, it's kind of deflating today to, you know, as, as the day went on, and I was talking to our DPW director, and, you know, what's really, you know, is this, is the storm a lot of talk? And, you know, are we not going to, and he's like, you need to cancel.
Yeah, for sure.
I think they might have canceled school, because.
I know, I just called.
Half day.
Half day?
Tomorrow?
Might be a half day of cancellation.
Good, because, so they go in in the morning, early release? One, oh, that's pretty much a full day for high school.
For the high school, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing I just wanted to mention was, you know, the next ZBA meeting, I mean, I always try to keep up to date on those, is March twenty-seventh. And at the last meeting, two of the applications were continued for, you know, eighty-nine West Main Street, which is still under design review. And King Street is still under design review. And then there's a third application for, it's a home business. And I, 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 no, I can't remember the woman's address. I don't know if she's in Northgate or in Chatfield Notch, but anyways, she, she wants to do a tutoring business out of her house. So that requires a special permit from the ZBA.
It's interesting, the two applicants that are continued, the design review board, as well as, I'm sure, the ZBA, they're struggling with the density. It's all coming back to that density factor, almost what we talked about tonight, which is the density. It's that factor that, what is too much?
Too much in a small space.
Right, so even regardless whether you're discussing density of duplexes, it's density of commercial and it's, it's just, these are two applicants that are, you know, want a lot of density. And so I think both boards are struggling with it, so. It's a common theme.
Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Anything else on this end? Anything else on this end? Push into adjourn, so, second? Thank you.